I'm going to call to order the Mountain City Council meet member meeting for Tuesday, April 23rd at 7 o'clock. We're in Mountain City Council chambers. Can you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we got that done. Sorry, my computer is slow here. Here we go. I got the agenda here. Does anybody have any amendments?
None from staff.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as is?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Okay, and can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that passes. All right, we got consent agenda. Does someone want to go through that?
Do we go through it first and then ask if there's any questions? Am I doing it?
Yeah.
Okay. I can go through the items. Consent agenda, item A, approve payment of claims, B, approve minutes from the April 9th meeting, C, approve resolution approving Lake Shore setback at 4360 Wilshire, D, approve resolution approving permits for 71st Annual Fire Department Relief Association Fish Fry and Dance on June 1st, waiving fees for public gathering, A, public gathering permit, B, concert permit, C, seasonal banner and sign permit, D, temporary on sale liquor license permit, E, approve resolution approving public gathering permit to Midwest Mung Outdoors use of Surfside Park and Beach as waystation for Bass Tournament on Friday, June 28th, F, approve resolution approving permit to Harrison's Bay Association for Rain Barrel Pickup on May 4th and waiving fees, G, approve resolution approving permits for music in the park at Surfside Park Beach and waiving fees, H, approve resolution approving liquor license for Mi Pueblo at 2281 Commerce Boulevard, and I approve resolution approving Mount Fire Department membership in Hennepin County Fire Chiefs Association.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody want to pull any of those?
I don't want to pull one, but I do want to speak to the rain barrel because the street conditions by the, you know, the street conditions need to be addressed.
Oh, like the?
And the parking, the bricks, yeah. It's pretty, it's pretty rough. So when you're driving into the parking lot right there, there's a lot of bricks from the winter that have come loose and are uneven and it's a real sort of dangerous, I think, especially for walking in a car. Probably isn't as bad, but it's still pretty significant.
Having it in a different spot?
Well, no, I just wonder if there's some way that this, you know, public works staff can go and do some sort of patching to just make sure that there's not dangerous fall areas for people walking through there.
I would offer that the public works could probably take a look at it, maybe try to fill in some spots. Those are up for our project this fall, so it might be minimal, but, and being that we're sort of short on time, I would say maybe. I can talk to Ryan.
We get a lot of, I mean, you know, there's a lot of traffic coming through there and with the farmer's market coming too. People walk through there and stuff, so we just need to kind of monitor it.
We will definitely do that.
But that was all, you know, it's just a caution because we're issuing that permit.
Okay. Anything else?
Not for me.
All right, so I got the consent agenda here. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Aye.
Councilmember McEnany.
Aye.
Councilmember Pugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Castellano.
Aye.
Mayor Holt.
Aye. All right, thanks. That all passes. All right, number five, we got comments and suggestions from citizens present that the item is not on the agenda. Please limit it to three minutes. Come on.
Mr. Mayor, very quickly, we just had a suggestion from our AV that if everybody could speak a little bit closer into the mics, I think they're having a hard time coming through, so.
Okay.
You're going to pull yours down? Okay. Is there anybody that wants to come? Okay, go ahead. Can you give us your name and address, please?
Sure, my name is Deanne Griffiths. I live at 2100 Old School Road. And I just wanted to say shalom and good evening. My name is Dan Griffiths and I recently resigned from the store clerk position yesterday at Harbor Wine and Spirits. Although my experience with the manager at Harbor Wine and Spirits became more difficult over the last 10 months, especially the last four months, I have a lot to be thankful for tonight. And I wanted to personally say thanks and put a face to one of the many people that work for the city of Mount. My presence here tonight isn't as a disgruntled former employee, and honestly, from my heart, I'm here to personally say thank you. I wish I had the chance to have met each of you over the last one and a half years while employed, but as life would have it for me, my primary focus was on supporting my aging parents through the pandemic that unfortunately landed on our shores. The store clerk position was the perfect answer to be able to be close to home and be employed while supporting and making sure my parents were okay and thriving. I give God all the glory and thanks as they are doing great and thriving like never before, serving their community, especially at the Gillespie Center that really has an amazing part of the city of Mount, and it's been a vital lifeline to their thriving. Thank you, Councilmember Pugh, for being the connection to the city of Mount and the Gillespie Center. The city of Mount, more importantly, the people of Mount have really mattered to me and my family over the last 45 years since we made the city of Mount our home in 1976. Thank you again for giving me the privilege of serving the ever-growing multicultural citizens of Mount and serving with the most, I've got to say this, a most amazing assistant manager, store clerks, keyholder, coworkers that I could ever ask for. They were more than supportive of me and accommodating me, and I believe they would say the same of me. I also believe that the customers also would say that of me as well, that they mattered. I hope my service really did matter to the city of Mount, having used my 25 years of awarded customer service skills and higher education and multicultural and identity formation skills, along with real-world experiences, working with people from over nine different countries in my career path using my conversational fluency in Spanish, "Hola, como estas?" and also having gleaned from various important phrases from Chinese, Russian, German, Korean, and actually Ora Guto, which is from Rwanda. Quick example and a highlight for me I have to share as a store clerk was making a customer feel they really mattered. And by using Chinese language skills, I deeply connected with them, which later resulted in a $1,900 sale. Shocked me too. People really do matter, not because of their dollar signs and not because of any products sold, but simply because they're people with real feelings, real hearts.
It's okay.
Real life journeys, real struggles, and simply want to feel that they really do matter. In closing, I want to say again, thanks, generally, genuinely, thanks. And although my experience may have been difficult one over the last four months, I'm still thankful and ask that you show the people that serve under you that as people, they really do matter. Go shake their hand, have a cup of coffee, and let the hallmark of the city of Mount be that people do matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks.
You know, that just resounds with the response I had gotten from several people saying how the customer service at the liquor store was just above and beyond, and that people were really friendly, they served and fulfilled, and obviously you were part of that. Thank you for your service.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have anybody else? All right, next up, we got Hennepin County Commissioner Kevin Anderson. Hey, Kevin. How are you?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and Council, for having me tonight. I, my name's Kevin Anderson. If we can move to the next slide here. We won't spend too much time on this one. For anybody who, who might not be familiar with me, who I haven't had a chance to meet yet, who, or for anybody who might be watching this later on, Kevin Anderson, I've served as your county commissioner for the last four years. I served as a public works chair. Most recently, I was also voted as the vice chair of our Public Service Committee, our Health and Human Services Committee, and our Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Additionally, I've taken on some leadership roles with the Association of Minnesota Counties and the National Association of Counties. I think it's been an incredible opportunity to be able to lend the voice of the western suburbs to, in some of these spaces. Sometimes I think that voice of suburban and rural commissioner in a large county has, can get lost. So it's, it's kind of great to be able to be your voice in those spaces, and I really appreciate that opportunity. We can move on to the next one. This year, I try to make it out to my city councils every year, and this year, my intent is to be able to show how our budget is showing up in the residents of Mount. So as you can see, this is kind of our visual representation of the county's budget. By and large, the largest portion of our budget is Health and Human Services. So over 50% of our budget goes to supporting residents when they're at their, at their low point, right? When they need support, Hennepin County is, our primary job is to lift them back up on their feet. We can move on to the next slide. Actually, probably the next slide too. Our, for the residents of Mount, one of the things that is striking and I think important to recognize, 2,300 individuals receive support. Now, this is by zip code, and so it's possible that these residents are all within the city of Mount, but it is important to note that it's our neighbors and the needs that Hennepin County is addressing is countywide. And I think that's the important thing, is that we are always trying to find ways of meeting people's needs, even if we don't necessarily have a service center available. We're investing in online resources, making sure that our call centers are staffed and answering and dealing with calls. There's always more work to do, right? We're always going to continue to strive to be better, but the need exists everywhere, and so we're committed to making sure that we're helping people and doing that work across the board. The, the next largest portion of our budget is public safety. Last year, we increased our budget for the Sheriff's Department by a fairly significant amount to make sure that they had the capacity to retain and recruit detention deputies specifically. We want to make sure that they're able to take care of the public safety of our residents. We're also investing in our facilities for, for the Sheriff's Department. We're building a new patrol division for them. We also, I'm just going to make sure I have my right notes here. We also have investments in our embedded social worker program that Mount has access to. That is, sometimes in my notes I have numbers, but I don't today. So I know it's part of a, several cities that share embedded social worker, and that program has been wildly successful. We just recently, today approved renewal of many of those grants. Next slide, here's our public works. We have a lot of work happening. As Chair of Public Works, it's been kind of exciting to see the additional projects popping up in western Hennepin. We, in 2023, we did a number of these maintenance projects and signal replacements. 2024, we're doing a lot of work on 16. So we're going to continue to find ways of investing in our infrastructure and making sure that it's taken care of. One part of our ability to do that is the Complete and Green Streets policy. This policy was passed last year, and to me, it's a fairly exciting policy. It allows us to evaluate pedestrian improvements or bicycle improvements, multimodal improvements on the interim between full reconstruction projects. So, you know, where there's a path along a county road that doesn't have a sidewalk, doesn't have enough shoulder, and there's pedestrians that are using it anyways, we all know those places, right? And this policy is going to allow us to revisit and evaluate those potential projects when we're doing more regular maintenance. So like a melon overlay or a chip seal that is designed to just prolong the life of the road. Historically, what we've done is just come through, done the preservation project, and moved on to the next project. This allows us to take a moment, say, is there any kind of improvement that we can make in the interim that can improve the, the life and safety of people who are using the road that may not be driving? So I think that's going to be particularly pronounced in the western suburbs, including Mount. Move on. One of the fun things that I always like to highlight is our embedded, or sorry, our youth sports grant funding. Youth in Mount have benefited from $47,000 for one playground grant and 100, almost $150,000 in various equipment grants. So it's not all through the city of Mount, but through the, the school district. And we're always finding ways of, trying to find ways to get money to support youth. So our next slide here is about the library. We know that there's going to be a new library in town, and I'm really excited about that. I think we're continuing to do the public engagement. We're trying to find a spot to make sure that we have alternative space for programming and to pick up books in the area. I think there's talk of partnering with the school, but I'll have to check with our, our library director. I was at the, the most recent public listening session. It's really exciting. I think this, this project is going to be really great for, for the residents out here. We see, you know, as was mentioned in the public hearing, usage is increasing year over year, and that's true across our library system, but it's particularly true out here. And that building definitely needed some, some TLC. So happy to see that, that project coming to fruition. I think we're going to be seeing work starting, I believe, this fall, so, and continuing on through the next year. So with that, happy to answer any questions. I wanted to keep this short and sweet, so. Thanks.
Yeah, does Council have any questions?
I don't have questions, Commissioner, but I just wanted to thank you. You've done a great job being in front of us and keeping us up to date.
Yeah.
And seeing you at, you know, the library and some of the other things that are going around in Mount. So it's been really great, and thank you for.
Happy to do it. It really is such a joy to, to be able to come out here and provide updates and, and get to know the, the community out here, so.
The trail crossing, you know, this has gotten bumped back here and there. So in your thing, it said 2024. I've heard anywhere from fall 2024 to spring of '25. Let me see. I know Jesse, you might, do you have any updates on that at all, or?
We haven't talked about it for a little while.
It's up to my council, isn't it?
Well, I know my council, but I guess if they get in there and get done with the road, then it could be as soon as this fall, but I just didn't know on your.
I don't have the timeline. Happy to follow up.
Yeah, do you want to follow up with Jesse and then?
Sure.
Maybe he can give us an update at the next meeting?
Sounds good.
Just people, big thing. We want to get it done, so.
Yep, absolutely.
But yeah, we appreciate, and thanks for the, helping out with the, the grant and the park money.
Absolutely.
And I just want to say, I'm glad you're talking about the paths, bike roads. We've talked about County Road 15 and Wilshire.
Yep.
To give us that circular path around Lost Lake, so good. We fit it.
We'll, we'll keep working every chance we get, so we want to make sure that we're, we're meeting the needs any chance we can.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you so much for having me.
See you.
See you.
All right, we got Belmont Park Native Plant Proposal. Maggie and Tyler?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, Mayor and Council, I'm just going to introduce Tyler Piper. In your packets, I have a timeline of kind of some discussions that have happened over the, and collaboration that has happened over the past several years with Tyler. And I'll let him kind of, he has a wonderful presentation to go through as well. The specific topic he will be talking about tonight is expanding on the Belmont Park Native Garden. There's currently some Native Garden sections there right now, and he's looking to expand. And so this has gone to the Park Commission a couple times, and within the proposal, they have talked through that with Tyler, and it would include a partnership with the city. Public Works would help with some of the watering and mulch, and this has been related to Public Works, and they agreed to, to continue to work on this project with him. They've done so in the past as well. It would also, the request is for $700 worth of plantings that would go into the park as well. But I'll let, and the Park Commission did recommend approval of this. And so if you have any questions, I'll be available after, but I'll let Tyler go through his presentation.
Hey, Tyler.
Hi, everyone and Council. Thank you for having me. Tyler Piper. I live at 5504 Church Road. So very near Belmont. This is a near and dear, you know, project to my heart. This work began in 2024, and just to thank you for the introduction, Maggie, to fill in some of the, the gaps there. Begin this project, and it was a coordination with, you know, again, the Parks Commission and city council. I think the previous city manager, Eric, was who I was working with at the time, but involved, you know, clearing a spot in the park. It was just a lot of grass, and, you know, by August, it's pretty dead and barren over there, and planting some stuff that looks like this with some flowers and things to attract butterflies. And I think what I underestimated is how many humans it attracted as well. There was a lot of people who liked it and different ages, I know. Just seeing people out there was rewarding for me and kind of made the weeding a little less hard. But what this project initially started out with, and the idea was plant walls and buffers, and this was part of the fun of working with the city, is, you know, I had an idea in my head, my son is two, and so I'm just, you know, hyper vigilant about, don't run in the road. So my initial project was more based on, let's build buffers around the different potential places you could run out into the street, you know, through different evolutions of the project and looking at the space. You know, there's concerns about salt and, you know, different things with that small strip of land. We ended up adjusting, and we have still kind of that benefit with one part of the roadway going, I believe that'd be east-west across Belmont. But what we did do is continue adding to it. So again, that was exciting for me to just, you know, evolve with what the city and the commission, the Park Commission specifically thought would be best. And so that's what's reflected in proposal two, if we get to those maps. I don't know if there's two or if you removed one of them.
Oh, you know, I think I kept both of them in there.
Which is good. I mean, just, it shows. But specifically, what I'm here for is proposal two, because that's what was approved by the, the Parks Commission. And so again, the plants are all 250 to about 350. It depends with a little bit of variability, but what's nice is in the previous process, what I did in my follow-up for after this meeting, should you approve it, would be to coordinate with the city manager and the vendor who we've used before, which is Natural Shore Technologies. They're based out of Long Lake. They have, to be honest, the cheapest prices around in terms of good quality plants. I mean, 250 a plug. If you check competitors online, I challenge you to find a better. And so, you know, around 230 plants to accommodate for the different spaces that I have. And so you'll see these kind of rough, rough estimates of the plans with, you know, potential plants in place. If, if you want a, a translation, so I don't go into scientific and Latin language, you know, we're basically going short to taller in the middle, you know, so people can see maximum amounts of the garden. You know, concerns that we've had in the past about people trampling them or not looking sightly, I think we've kind of dealt with those, and there haven't really been that many issues. Typically, around May is when I clear the gardens, give them kind of their buzz cut. So if you've driven by recently wondering why is he proposing this, having got to it, I leave the stuff so the bees and butterflies nesting in the stems can kind of have a chance to overwinter a little longer. But yeah, if we want to keep going through the next area, this was proposal one. And again, the idea was that there was, you know, a driveway nearby. We talked with the city crew, and this, they kind of semi-quasi-approved this recommendation. They had no problems with it, I think is a better way of saying. But again, I actually like, and my wife does too, once I showed her the design. If we go to design two for a second. So we're extending the current garden, extending another current garden, and adding a buffer strip here. And what's important to me, and again, I have a two-year-old son who will be aging into this, is that that whole green space to the nearby road over there is open. I mean, this neighborhood does need places kids can throw football and, you know, kick a soccer ball. That's more my cup of tea, but I didn't want to encroach on that space. But what's nice is you kind of, even in this design, have this almost little shell of gardens and butterflies and stuff that kids like to see too, built around the gardens, I mean, around the playground. So where it's in blue is where the city would come out, and this is what we did last time. I spray painted the ground. They cleared it, and obviously, we do the, the checks with, you know, wires or anything like that. The benefit is of plants is that I'm not really going low enough to hit anything. Yeah, it's what I've gotten when I've done this for about five or 10 years. And, but still, it's good to be safe and make sure we're, we're not having any issues. We'll call that, get that set, spray stuff in, and then I think it's by May 25th or 27th is the first day they have plant orderings available, or at least for pickup. And so I've already coordinated with the vendor in the past, just because I, I use them for other projects that I work on, personal hobby stuff. So they would have the ability to, you know, take an order that large and make sure that it was kind of prepared on time and ready for us, should we go that route. So if we want to move to the next slide, the different areas you saw, there's an old willow tree that's ginormous, and it's frankly going to die and fall sooner rather than later, but on that property, but I just named this garden because it's nearby it. But to not go into each individual plant, they're all native. They all have great benefits, and part of my plan comes from the idea that it's almost a symphony of colors over the, the summer. And so you're going to get some spring stuff, you're going to get some middle of the summer in the heat, and then some stuff like the asters that are very late in the fall. And so you get a maximum benefit. I don't know if I can promise at one time on 4th of July, when the fireworks are going off, it's going to look, you know, all flowers at once, but it is a really wonderful sight when it's out there. And I know this from, you know, pictures I've taken or seen people taking little pictures, neighbors with their cameras, you know, getting pictures of stuff like that. So that, that's been fun, rewarding for me. We can go to the next, next one. This was the left garden that's adding on to the second. So currently, you know, there's two blocks of gardens, and this is that second one on the side. And again, same idea where we kind of start small with the butterfly weed. That's a great one to attract monarchs. And then we get, you know, some smaller stuff in the middle with strawberry. These are all kind of lower side because they're also going to be in, working in coordination with the gardens that are already there. So that's the only thing that I wouldn't call the nicer because I love this whole process, but, you know, it will look like a newish garden for a year. But why I like this vendor a lot is they have plants that have been in the pots for a year, two years, three years sometimes, and so when you put them in, they, they take off. And I have the pictures. It was in a, a Laker article, I think from a year or two ago, but we, we kind of documented the process over time, and within a year, it looked almost established. So I'm hoping that, you know, if we plant early enough and, you know, through the coordination with Jesse and the team, we could pull that off so that by June, July, people are walking by and there's a fresh coat of mulch. These plants are growing, and it looks like a nice addition to the park. Final garden layout, I recommend going to Minnesota Native Wildflowers on Google. There's a great repository if you're ever curious about these, but I think in the next couple slides, I don't know if this is shared with you digitally, but I did link some of the, the names of the plants. but I did link some of the, um, the names of the plants. So if I've sparked some curiosity in native plants, you want to go crazy, feel free to click the links. But, um, you know, that kind of sums up the, the total summary of the proposal. As Maggie said, the one thing, um, you know, this was a drought, so I'm probably a little bit scarred, but the last time I did this, and this is on me a hundred percent, but I didn't, I didn't ask for help. And so again, with my, uh, wife ending up on some of these interior things, she wanted to make sure I asked for help this time, so I wasn't bugging over multiple five-gallon jugs in our Honda Civic. I'm not a pickup-type guy. But anyways, you know, shared responsibilities and that, I think through further coordination. And, you know, again, make sure we ask the, the city crews first, because that's gonna be, you know, part of their schedules. Well, the mulch has been extremely easy, because I do a very minimal amount. I don't want a giant mound, and they just come out when they're spreading, left a pile for me. I came and put it in there, and that was that. So at, at this point, any questions or concerns? I'd love to hear, otherwise, I would just love to hear your opinion on it.
Does Council have any questions for Tyler?
Well, you've done a beautiful job over there. And the fact that you've taken it upon yourself to plan the gardens, that's huge.
Thank you.
So, you know, I think it'll look just great when it's done, and I much prefer, uh, the layout too as well.
Good.
It's, it's not as random, it's more concise together.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks really good. And thank you for taking this on.
Of course, it's, I'm really grateful for the city's cooperation over the, the last couple of years. And, you know, it's, uh, one more reason to convince my wife to, uh, stick around, you know? We've got these gardens we've got.
We have a two-year-old too, that definitely helps.
Exactly, we want to take advantage of the school district, uh, you know, I've heard of a lot of good things like that, so.
Anything else?
Oh, I think it's awesome.
All right, do we have a motion or anything?
Hey, do we have to make a motion to approve the?
Um, I'm not sure, has it been passed? It's right here.
Yeah, I, I would do one, just.
Maybe a motion, um, just affirming a recommendation from the Parks and Open Space Committee.
Other parks.
Okay, can someone make that?
I want you to reword your motion. Okay, I'll do it, okay. I make a motion that we, um, approve the recommendation of the Parks Commission for the budget of seven hundred dollars to the Belmont Park.
All right, you got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? All right, that passes. Thanks, Tyler.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we got, uh, revised website update. Maggie.
Yeah, uh, Mayor and Council, the item this evening is to talk about a new website design. Um, so when I started in August last year, one of the priorities was to, um, work on ways that we could improve our communications. And, um, throughout that, throughout the last few months, we've made progress in some areas. We've been working on the newsletter and social media. Um, we, I've, uh, also worked on updating, um, our website a little bit, with just making information, um, a little easier to navigate. Um, but one thing I've been running into is that we're a little limited with our current website, uh, in the sense that they are doing upgrades of their own right now. And that means that we are not able to do a full upgrade of their website until twenty twenty-five. Um, and so I, they've been a great partner, it's Civic Plus. Um, but since, uh, we weren't able to kind of get anything moving this year, we decided, the Communications Committee, we decided to, um, look at what our options were in general, um, as far as where we could go with our website. Uh, and so over the past several months, I've met with different vendors, um, including three companies that specialize in government websites specifically. Um, and two of them are very large organizations, Civic Plus and Granicus. And then Revised is a, is more of a smaller company. Um, but again, they all focus in local government websites. Uh, I also looked at the option of working with a company that would completely redesign our website, and it would be our own. But, um, after looking into it a little bit more, I, I don't recommend that as a, as the option moving forward. Um, and so with kind of moving forward with the website, um, one of, I listed some goals of the Communications Committee, um, in kind of what we want our new website to include, and that is, again, enhance communications, just overall look and feel and the ability to navigate it, um, better. Um, we also, uh, focus on discussions related to email and text notifications, being able to incorporate that in there, um, adding, and then from a staff perspective, adding in that human resource element. Right now, we don't have a great option to do online applications, and so it's all very much paper-based. Um, incorporating eventually online bill pay option for, um, you know, the, uh, permits and, and utility bills. Um, creating a kind of a city meetings hub where we can kind of keep all of our documentation for our meetings in one place, and people can, don't have to look in several, uh, places for that. More administrative flexibility and a better connection with social media and e, uh, e-newsletter capabilities. And so, um, again, when working with all these companies, um, we've met several times as a Communications Committee, uh, we kind of ta, looked a lot at the cost of, um, the cost of these items. And what we were running into is that, uh, a couple of the companies, while they all offer great products, um, two of the companies, we kind of ran into this à la carte problem, where you're able to get the website design, but then if you want to add on the features we want, you have to then pay for those extra. And it's just kind of their business model, um, and, uh, it got, it, it added up very quickly. And so, um, we did, I explored a couple other cities in the area, and the city of Victoria, um, I noticed had worked with a company called Revised. Um, I believe they're out of Michigan. But, um, they, in, uh, my interest was, okay, we have another local city using them, let's reach out, see what they have to offer. Um, they are able to do their website, um, ev, uh, not as à la carte, so they're able to bring everything in together and under one price, so we know what we're getting. Um, and it's, again, um, we're not worried about having to add on those features later. Um, and so, uh, Councilmember McInnany and I, uh, recently met with the company just to do one last meeting with them. Before we brought it to council, we wanted to make sure that they were able to do everything we want them to do, um, as far as meeting our long-term goals, and we felt that that, um, that they were able to do that. Um, and so tonight, uh, I provided kind of a little bit of background that they provided to me, uh, and then their proposal, or their, um, yeah, their agreement proposal, which the city attorney is currently looking at. There are some concerns in there that we would have to negotiate still. But, um, I, I think that's doable, um, to, to work with them and still get what we want out of it. Um, so the, there are two options that they propose as far as financing. And, um, we can do a, one, the first year would be a more of a lump sum payment. Um, I believe that was fourteen thousand, five hundred. And then the next two years would be, uh, twenty, or the following years would be twenty-five hundred. Otherwise, we can do a five-year contract at forty-nine hundred. Um, one thing, I had to do a little research, uh, that's in line with what we're currently budgeting, is about forty-five hundred. Um, the last few years, we were about, with Civic Plus, we were at about four thousand. Um, I reached out to another neighboring city that uses Civic Plus, and their new contract was about forty-six hundred. Um, and so I think if we were to go back with them, just for what we ba, what we have right now, it would be around that same price. Um, but again, if we wanted to add on features, it would, we'd kind of do that à la carte model, and it would, the price would go up. And so I feel like, uh, when we met with them, again, the price was right in line with what we're currently budgeting, and it meets all the needs that, um, kind of we're looking for as far as a website in the future. So, um, again, that, there's more information in your packets, but, um, I guess we're looking, uh, the recommendation, um, is that we move forward, again, pending, uh, further review and comments from the city attorney as far as the contract. But, um, yeah, just looking for discussion and any, any further comments on what you see in the packet.
All right, does Council have any questions for Maggie?
So we're just making a recommendation tonight, pending the.
So, so I'm talking with, uh, Maggie, excuse me. Um, an option is to approve it, subject to the final review and approval of, of the city manager and myself. Then it'll give us some time then to work through the negoti, you know, the negotiation and those issues that I've, may have seen. And then, and if there is any material changes, um, as I look at it, is like, uh, something that would materially impact the city, price, whatever, it can come back to the council.
And one thing to note too is, once the process is started, it's about twenty to twenty-six weeks to design and get everything, um, s, uh, kind of start to finish. And it would be myself and Communications Committee that would, um, kind of work through that process if approved.
Well, I want to say a thanks to Councilwoman McInnany, your hard work. And Maggie, of course.
Maggie's done the legwork, but it's really exciting, it's gonna be really interactive. And what we don't have currently is any kind of administrative flexibility for Maggie. So we can't even go in and change a color, you know, without having the Civic Plus do it. So this is gonna give Maggie a lot of flexibility, it's gonna add a lot more work, but it might eliminate work with us adding the bill pay and, um, notify me, so residents will be able to harvest email addresses of our residents. And, um, the thing I'm most excited about is just being able to get up in front news and highlights for our residents right off the bat when they see the front of the website. And it, it's all reactive for phone and, obviously, and it just looks great on the phone too, so.
Oh, it's like more mobile-friendly?
Yeah, yeah, it's reactive and stuff. So it's, it's, it's really exciting for mound, to get into the twenty-first century with, uh, visual communication.
Yeah, and it might be, you know, some work and, you know, in the front end, but it'll be wor, I think it'll be worth it in the long run.
And part of what takes so much time is mining all the information that's currently on our website and moving it over. And then at that point, you know, Maggie will have to figure out if, it, it'll be a good time to purge, kind of like cleaning your garage when you've decided to rebuild.
Yeah, like just looking at what, you know, the information and what, maintaining what's relevant and what's not, so.
Well, thank you for bringing that back, and again, all your work as well. I think it's a great idea, and this is what we're trying to do, is be more communication-friendly. And, uh, can you go back to that little list that we had at the top there? Like that first one, I don't know if you said that one or not, but opt-in email and text notifications. You know, just things like that, that, you know, on our current website, if you click on it now, and it's like, it doesn't go anywhere.
Yeah.
Looks like it took it, but it doesn't do anything. So hopefully nobody's doing that.
It'll just be modernizing everything, you know? Even when, it kind of cracks me up, I've been here, what, thirty-four years, and I didn't even know we had bill pay. So then I got excited, and then you have to go up to the city to get a piece of paper. You know, you can't fill anything out, out online. So everything will be able to be done online, even for like, um, uh, Citizen of the Year.
Yeah.
I, I, we won't be ready for that this year, but going forward, they won't have to turn in a typed sheet of paper.
Right, right.
And it'll, it'll be really great for notify me.
Yep.
Well, good, any other questions or concerns, comments? Okay, again, thanks for your work on that, is there something to approve here?
Yeah, I think as.
Just a motion?
Attorney Landsman said, if, if you are in favor of moving ahead, um, it would be moving, I guess, moving forward with, um, working with Revised to, for the website, but then, um, with the understanding that the attorney and, uh, uh, staff needs to kind of finalize that agreement.
Okay.
Um, still, and then if anything substantial, any big changes are needed, then we'll bring it back.
We'll grab it.
So, Mr. Mayor, that, that copy, the, the agreement itself was, starts on page ten fifty-two. You may have seen that. My suggestion, maybe if it is correct, would be a motion to approve, subject to, um, the final review and approval of the city attorney and city manager.
Yes.
And does there need to be decision at this point with regard to, because there is two different ops, financing options?
Oh, um, I guess my recommendation would have been, would be the five-year, um, just because that's what we're used to budgeting for. Um, and it would just, I guess, keep our budget similar and.
I was gonna say that too, like pending the agreement, you know, coming out, like spreading the costs, like five grand a year is probably best.
Yeah. All right, so we'll make a motion.
Can I say, I don't mean to bring this out in the open, but it's one of the financing. So is the idea that they're looking at as a five-year contract is about twenty-four thousand dollars, and that's set, and that's set no matter what? And if we just, if the city decides that it doesn't want the services anymore, we still have to pay for that full amount?
Oh, pay for the five years and then don't renew?
Well, what if we, what if we get to year three, because, and we, the city doesn't like how their, the, the work that's happening? Um, that's the only issue I have with the five years, because you're kind of tied into that, where if you did the larger amount up front for the design, and then paid a smaller amount per year, the city could have that option if they find that the services aren't quite what it wants it to be, to be able to back out. It's, but there's a larger cost up front.
So the fourteen-five up front, and then?
Fourteen-five for the first year, and then that was at twenty-four hundred, I think, or year two and so, and onward. That way, because originally how the contract is written is that it states here that if we decide that year three, four, or whatever, we decide we don't, the city, city council decides that the services aren't working anymore, we want to terminate the agreement, it accelerates. That, I find that problematic, because the whole idea for the twenty-four hundred dollars is just, um, is just for hosting. And if they're not providing that service, the city shouldn't be paying for that. But I, I, I don't, we don't, I don't know more until, because I brought these issues up, and I won't know more until we actually, um, talk to them. Maybe what I, maybe what I suggest is, once you find out exactly what it is they're providing and how the structure is, um, lean towards the, the five-year payment. But if it's, but if, but if the, if the staff makes a determination that, that it would be better for the city based on, you know, our discussions, to go to the more front-loaded model, then go with that.
Well, I mean, that, that begs, you know, you're in charge of all the finances, is that doable?
It is doable, yeah. Um, I, yeah, I mean, there, we do have flexibility. The five, and he, uh, Attorney Landsman did bring up some good points. And that is some, I, I think we do need to meet with the, with them and just see, talk through some of those talking points. But, um, either way, we can make it work. I, I think just having a stable five years is, is nicer. But, um, again, if that is not the route that would work best, um, we can, we can make the other contract work as well.
And we've been with this current one for, what, three years?
Mm-hmm, about four, yeah.
Yeah, and, boy, I don't know if you remember the one before.
Who was the one before?
That was pretty rough.
It was bad.
Who was?
It was like the first internet ever.
But like the vendor, I, I thought Civic Plus was just like the Walmart of government websites, and I didn't realize how expensive they were.
They're one of several.
Anyway, this is gonna be a heck of a lot better.
Cool.
In all cases, so.
Yeah.
I'd rely on you on how, how you think we should pay for it, but.
Yeah.
I'm open to either way, or if, again, if we want to save the five-year now, and then if it's not, come back and sign?
I, I, I mean, like I said, I, I need to know, we need to know more about, because.
The structure.
How the structure is, but the, the issue is, is that, you know, if you go into that five-year, you're tying yourself into a five-year contract, because if you're in year three, it's gonna, there's gonna be a buyout.
Right.
Um, where there, where if you front-load it, maybe there won't be a buyout, if you're not unhappy with the service that's provided.
And that does make sense, because the main cost is the initial design. And then Maggie will have a ton of flexibility to change, you know, once we're set up. So that does make sense, in case, what if something happens in three years, and then we've already paid for the design up front.
They, were they still hosted then?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So I, I, I think maybe just give the flexibility to. So I, I, I think maybe just give the flexibility to staff to make that determination of, you know, what, what would be the, what would be in the best interest of the, of the city once we've gone through it and had a discussion with them. Because the, the overall price isn't going to change. That'll, that'll remain the same.
Okay. Well, can you tell us what our motion should be?
I, I would say, uh, I would, just like we said, a motion to approve the, the agreement, which is on page, starts on page ten fifty-two, subject to the final review and approval of the manager, city manager and the city attorney. That will provide that flexibility.
Okay. Does someone want to say that? Or say so moved?
Um, well, it's on the record, you can just say.
Just say so moved.
Yeah, you can say moved as the city attorney recommended. How's that? Did you get my motion?
Someone's got to say it though.
I'll, I'll say it one more time. Motion to approve the agreement, starting on page ten fifty-two, subject to the final review and approval of the city manager and city attorney.
Okay, I'll make that my motion. Can I get a second?
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that passes. Thanks, Maggie.
Thank you, Maggie.
Thanks.
All right, number nine, we got Svetlana, and she's going to come up and give us a presentation. Can you give us your name and address?
Hello, my name is Svetlana Sapigna and address is three zero zero one Drury Lane, Mound. First of all, thank you for inviting my husband and me today. We are the, relatively the new residents of Mound. We moved here in summer two thousand twenty, twenty-two. And let me introduce myself, my art and possibly my exhibition idea. So my name is Svetlana. I am a bead artist and I started creating trees and flowers out of beads in two thousand seven. So here is our little pop-up show today. So you can see some of the examples of my works. I teach this craft since two thousand ten. I also have two published books. I participated in more than sixty national and international shows and beading events. And my last participation was in the Minnesota State Fair, where I've got some prizes. I will show the pictures later in the slide, next slide, please. My, it was always my dream to, to move and live in the U.S. And luckily, it, it come true. So in two thousand nineteen, I've got the EB1 green card as an artist. And we moved here in Minneapolis first. And then about two years ago, we bought a house here in Mound, on the Phelps Island. Let me tell about my, some of my projects. This was my first project in two thousand eleven. A lady contacted me and they had an idea of creation of a beaded wreath to commemorate people who served and died during September eleventh attack, attack. So I sent several flowers together with other artists from all over the world. And this wreath was presented and on the monument opening in Indianapolis. I only saw that wreath on, on a picture. That would be nice if, if to see it in, in real life. So my next project was this replica of Kate Middleton's wedding bouquet. And it was a long story, but it was presented to her on my behalf in England. Yeah, and I, I would like to tell you more about it, but maybe next time. So here's my other project. It's American Beauty Rose, which was presented to the first lady of the United States in two thousand seventeen. And next are some of my pieces, like for example, the geranium and my wedding bouquet, which were the finalists at the Beaded Button Show in Milwaukee in different years. And yeah, here is my most recent alum flower, the purple one, which got the second place ribbon and the sweepstakes at the Minnesota State Fair this, last summer. And also you can see the little yellow flowers. This is mimosa. It got the second prize. This, this was my recent class. We were creating the beaded Christmas tree with the members of the Upper Midwest Bead Society. I'm not sure if you're familiar with this society in Minneapolis. Next are more pictures from my classes. And next you can see two of my books. And I even created the beading technique. So I was contacted by a man who collects the beaded flowers from, I, I don't remember for sure, it was Swiss, Switzerland or Swiss. And he wanted me to create a beaded fern. And none of the existing techniques worked for that. It just didn't look real. So I needed to invent my own technique, which I later registered and called Russian Beading Technique. So next you can see some exhibitions, which I used to have in the Gallery of Modern Art, Museum of Stone, in the Central City Library. And I would like to continue doing my exhibitions and classes here. And what, what do I need? I need some place, obviously. It can be a library or church or some gallery, museum, show, some showcases or the stands to place the pieces, the beaded pieces. Yeah. And by the way, I'm already going to have my first big exhibition in May. And I would like to invite everybody who wants to visit it. It's going to be in Minnesota State, in Minnesota Valley Chapter. The gallery is called Cuba Gallery. This is located in Bloomington, on the bank of the Minnesota River, so it's a beautiful place. The open house is going to be on May nineteenth from one to four P.M. And besides food and drinks, people will also see our works, of course. I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm not the only one, the only artist who is going to present fabulous flowers. But also there will be painters, mosaic artists, so I think it will be interesting. Also, they have the trail in the forest, in the park, so visitors will be able to, to take a walk. And the dates of the exhibition is from May tenth to June fourth. But the open house, the most interesting part will be on May nineteenth from one till four. Also, if, if you go, if you want to give me an email address, they will send an official invitation to everybody who gives their email address, so please let me know. And thank you for your attention. And you're all invited to my first exhibition. And hopefully, um, we can come with more ideas in the future, somewhere in Mound, if there is such a place. Oh, by the way, our first presenter was talking about the library. So we have the old library and it's going to be a new one, right? I think it's an ideal place for, for an exhibition like that. Oh, and just, we can scroll quickly through some of the other pictures of my works. Yeah. So this should be a popular flower here on Christmas. Sunflower. And here you can compare the real flower and the beaded one. I hope they look similar.
How long does it take you to create, you know, like that blue flower?
Blue? Uh, the little one?
No, the big, like, uh...
Alum?
Yeah.
Uh-huh. Alum, it took me two months and a half.
Okay, wow. Yeah, it looks like it would be laborious work.
About, by the way, my husband recently, I put time when I start beading and when I finish. And you recently, one hundred fifty hours for, for the, for the purple. And for the geraniums, those are like multicolored flowers. It took me one hundred seventy-six hours. I just recently, I have a notebook. I just recently looked through it, through it, so I remember. What about my wedding bouquet? You see those white colored lilies? It just took me one month, because I didn't have any choice. I just, the idea came one month before my wedding. And the last dew drops I put in the morning.
That's beautiful work.
My husband was helping. He was holding my bouquet and I was putting those beads. And luckily, I did it on time.
Teamwork.
Yeah. So yeah, here is the birch tree. And the next are the roses, inspired by some people. Yeah. And the last page is my contact information. Yeah, please take a picture. Also, I have my cards here with my phone number and the website. Please take a card and text me sometimes. Thank you.
Yeah, does council have any questions for her at all? So she's a local Mound resident and actually her husband reached out to me a few months ago. And then they did kind of a presentation for me and Jesse in the other room. And just, I said, you know, anybody in, in Mound is welcome to come and present anything if they want to. So I said, well, first of all, can I touch it? No. She's like, don't touch, right? Because you're, it's not good to touch them.
You can touch sometimes.
Some, okay, all right. Well, I learned that. But then also, she's got some books and... So are you going to stay around here so then we can see it after and we're done?
Yeah, we are going to stay till...
Maybe take a picture or something? Okay.
Sure.
Um, but yeah, I urge everybody to, to look at that. And really, your stuff is not for sale, right?
Um, it can be sometimes, but I'm trying to keep my works to, to have something for the exhibitions.
Yeah.
Yeah. And also, I, I like, if I calculate how much hours did I put into it? And if I calculate the real price, it's usually pretty expensive price, so not everybody.
So we also talked about, like she suggested about the, the library. And of course, we're not going to have one in, in a minute here for about a year or so. But we thought of that, that might be a great place for you to, and we'll kind of help you, maybe reach out. And maybe they have some kind of exhibition area. I think they do. Don't they have some glass? Because your stuff has to be behind glass. So we thought about something even here at the city hall, if we could start some kind of program like that. But I think right now it'd be probably best at the library.
Something bigger, like a geranium can stand just on the stand without the glass. But for example, the pussy willow, it's better to keep in the glass because it's tall. So not to, not to move it, not to shake it, kind of, so it doesn't fall.
Yeah.
Are you teaching classes to people here in Mound? Or, or just all over?
Currently, I only teach from time to time. Like I was invited to teach before Christmas by the Upper Midwest Bead Society. But I don't teach on the regular basis now, because I also have a full-time job here. And when I came, I started to teach, but then COVID happened. So now, yeah, but I would like to continue. I just need some place and I need people who are wanting to come and be taught.
I was just thinking about, you know, community ed, you know, through the high school. They have a lot of classes that they offer.
For children?
So you, you can sign up to, to teach a class. You can teach a class if you want.
Which school?
The Mound West Tech High School. It's called Community Education. And they have a lot of programs that people can sign up for and then they pay a fee. And you would work with them to figure out what the schedule would look like for spring, summer, winter, fall. But it might be a fun opportunity for you to teach adults and kids alike.
Okay, thank you for that idea. I need to contact them.
Jesse, can you email them how to get ahold of the school district or something? Yeah, we, we all get them probably like quarterly. We get the little brochure. And then we spend all of our paychecks on the, all the different classes for the kids.
Yeah.
Anyway, yeah. Well, again, we appreciate you coming out. And then if you would stay around, then we can turn the lights on and look at your stuff and maybe take a photo or something. Thanks.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, number ten, we got planning commission recommendation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Rita Trapp, planning consultant for the city. As was noted in the packet, as we were starting to work on the 2024 code updates, we noticed that the mixed-use districts had not been updated reflective of the comprehensive plan amendment that was adopted earlier this year, late last year, as we went through the timing. So we went through and identified some potential changes that we should do to make sure that the zoning code is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And that's what's before you this evening, are the changes that we recommended based on our understanding of what the direction was from the comprehensive plan. We met with the planning commission twice. The first meeting was to just kind of check in on a few items to understand what the direction might be, and then we proposed the ordinance that you see in front of you. We did some technical kind of organizational cleanup items, which I don't need to spend a lot of time on, but I could clarify if there's questions. Kind of the major changes are talking about the senior living buildings and replacement apartments, making sure they're conditional uses, not just permitted uses, to kind of indicate that the city would want to have more conversation if someone was interested in that. That change does mean that there are no apartments specifically listed as an allowed use at all in the mixed-use districts. It would just be replacement. We would limit the height in both districts to thirty-five feet, which I think reflects the discussion that we had in the comprehensive plan amendment. If you previously remember, there used to be a fifty-foot in the downtown district and a thirty-five-foot in the corridor district. And if we're only looking at townhouses or mixed-use buildings, we really don't need fifty feet in order to accommodate those. The third one is a little bit interesting and it's specifically intended to address the reality of, our understanding is that we could have mixed-use buildings in downtown, that there would be an openness to that. As part of the clarifying conversation with the planning commission, we made sure that we understood that if you had, for example, a retailer in our office on the ground floor and apartments above, that there would be interest in that. I think my understanding has been that we really don't want just standalone apartment buildings, but if we wanted mixed use. Our concern was just that if you did that, there still might be a scale issue, that there was still that feeling that we don't want large, large buildings. And so the strategy to address that was to limit the length of the wall, of a single wall along a facade, to make sure that we didn't get big buildings. So how we came to two hundred feet is I took a measurement of how, how long are Tessa's, one of their walls is? How long is the wall behind True Value? How long is the facade that's on where Scotty B is? How long is the Commerce Place? Just to get a sense of where those measurements were and then pick a number that was lower than those, assuming that that's kind of what we feel like is an acceptable building. So in general, when we look at other communities, not a lot of communities have this. A few other ones that we had worked with in the past, they were saying, you know, between two hundred and three hundred feet. So I felt pretty good about being at the low end, but obviously that number could be different if you would like. In order to have that standard included in the code though, we needed to define what facade meant. And so that's just in addition to our definition section. So that is also included in the code. Before you, the planning commission reviewed this and were comfortable with the proposed changes. This is a public hearing tonight, because you do hold the public hearing, so we do need to officially hold the public hearing. Then in your packet is an ordinance that identifies the changes that we would make with the code. And then there is also the resolution that we would need to have that just confirms the fact that the summary publication of that ordinance, because the ordinance is fairly lengthy with a lot of different edits, is sufficient in order to communicate effectively to the public about what the ordinance was about. And that does require forfeits. The resolution does, the ordinance doesn't. It's just one of the fun things. doesn't. Um, it's just one of the fun things, um, about how codes work. So with that, I can answer any questions. Hopefully, it makes sense.
I just have, like, two small questions. Um, so the two hundred feet would be in code, and then if there was a particular project, like, it would be like a planning variance or?
If someone would want to vary from that?
They would need a variance.
Yes. Well, the reality is, in our mixed-use district, we basically say that other than, uh, an existing building that you're going to modify, you need to have a CUP for planning and development. So if someone would have a project, and you would like it, and you want to go bigger than that, it would be part of that process.
And then the definition of facade, if I remember from planning, it's like, doesn't there have to be, you can't just have like one flat, one material wall. It has to be broken up?
We have that, which is why I specifically, um, I described it, you're correct. What I was, the reason I used facade and not wall is we have a standard in the design section that says you can't have a wall longer than this long without having it breaking up. And so I didn't want to use the term wall. I wanted to use the term facade, and a facade is made up of multiple walls.
Got it.
So that you still, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't, you would be able to still account for that entire. That's why we have the definition of facade, and I, in specifically did not use the term wall. So wall is in the code. You do have to break it up, but this is saying a combination of walls can't be longer than two hundred feet.
Perfect.
At least that was my intention. If it didn't come across that way, then we need to change it.
No, that's, that's all I, only thing that I had on my mind.
So with that?
All right.
I don't have anything else.
So we just got to do a whole public meeting?
Yes, a public hearing and then consideration.
Okay.
Sarah would like me to mention. I don't mind. Um, just as a note, the original, um, posting of the ordinance mentions section one thirty-nine, and that there was a, when we had done code revisions, uh, back about two years ago, there was actually a change in the number from one thirty-nine to one thirty-seven. Um, and there was some code updates that we did to get everything squared away. We worked with the city clerk on that. So this ordinance is, it says one thirty-seven. The code online says one thirty-nine. This is the right number.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, I'm going to open a public hearing. If anybody wants to say anything. All right, here and done. I'm going to close the public hearing. All right, so we have the actions A on, uh, thousand fifty-nine, to approve the ordinance. Does someone want to make that?
Just making a motion to approve the ordinance, right?
Yeah.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance amending the mixed-use zoning district regulations of chapter one twenty-nine pertaining to definitions and the mixed-use downtown district and the mixed-use corridor district regulations.
All right, got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that passes. And then we got B. Uh, can someone make that motion on page one thousand sixty-two?
Uh, I make a motion authorizing publication of ordinance, blank twenty twenty-four by title and summary, whereas the city council and, do I read all that?
No, just, just the title.
Just the title.
Okay, got the motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that passes too. Thanks for that.
Thanks, Rita.
Okay, number eleven, we got council reports from Councilmember Pew.
Um, well, the, um, Parks Commission met, and we talked about a process for coming up with names for the new events park downtown. Last year, we did a day at the farmer's market, and we actually did solicit people to give us ideas for names. So we have that group of names as a base. Um, but we're going to, um, approach the historical society and just getting some information from them as to if there is some significant historic names or landmarks that we might want to consider, uh, naming. So we're going to be doing research, and then, um, at our next meeting, deciding on, um, a selection process and bringing that to the council. So I would suspect by July, August, we'll have a recommendation for names for the council for the new park.
All right. Anything else?
Well, I participated in a thing called Chit Chat and, uh, Cheesecake with the Mixed Blood Theater, which was kind of fun. And we talked about housing for aging, and they're going to make a play from it. It was a conversation. And then they're going to make a play from the conversation. So it was kind of fun.
Anything else?
I think that's it.
All right. Councilmember Larson?
Um, unless you're going to talk about it, about?
Go ahead.
Mayor Jerry Rockvam. Um, excuse me if I keep my voice going here. Uh, I did attend his, uh, uh, Celebration of Life last Saturday at Fletcher's in Spring Park. Um, uh, Jerry Rockvam, if I say he was a character, I'm putting it lightly. This man, uh, did a lot of things for our Lake Minnetaka community. He, um, was mayor of Spring Park in kind of two phases, but o- over four decades. He did a lot to get that city up and running. Like him or not, he, he has done a wonderful, has done such wonderful things there. This service serve, this Celebration of Life they had on Saturday, um, when I talked to his daughter, she said they were going to, wanted to, his dad, her dad would have called and get back to work, and that's kind of Jerry Rockvam, get back to work. Uh, when he first, when he became mayor of Spring Park, and I'm just mentioning it out here, he was, in nineteen sixty-six, he was, uh, that was his first term as mayor of Spring Park. He was then the youngest person ever elected to the position of mayor in the state of Minnesota. So I think that was something. Uh, Jerry had, uh, Mr. Rockvam always worked well with our city. He, uh, he was there. He supported us. Uh, he, he's going to be really missed even by our community of Mount. He's a wonderful person, and, um, he just was a little forceful, I'll say, because I've worked with Jerry. Um, I, um, he got a lot of awards. He was voted in two thousand and seventeen, Rockvam Boat Yards, uh, Incorporated was voted, uh, he was voted the Nat, their company was voted the National Marina of the Year for the United States. So that's quite the thing. And, uh, we're all going to miss him. He's always been a Lake Minnetaka boy, lived here his whole life, and, uh, we are going to miss him, and my condolences to his family. Um, another thing I wanted to mention is our wonderful Public Works guys. Again, I see they have our spring flowers up on our entrance to our monument sign there, and I just think that's a, kind of a warm feeling for people coming to our, our city of Mount, that, uh, we have something pretty there at the entrance. So thank Ryan and, and his crew for me. That's it.
All right. Councilmember McEnany?
Nothing.
All right, Councilmember Maslow?
All right. I just have one quick update. The, uh, water bill, uh, fix is out of the House, which we talked about, but it's in the, I guess in the Senate, it's in that court now, so we just need that to pass and move on with that. So if you want to email or call, Senator Morrison, that'd be, that'd be good. I know she's a supporter, so I'm just, let's not let this fail. Uh, but that's all I got. So do you have anything?
Only that, uh, as of this afternoon, the flushing of the hydrants should be done, so.
Nice.
There was a water main break last time up on three points that was taken care of, and then they came back around today and finished flushing up there, so it should be done behind us.
Okay. All right, anything else?
No, I'm not.
All right. If, again, if you guys want to be in a picture, let's do that right away.
I can take your picture if you want.
All right, well, we could all. Whoever wants to be in the picture, we'll, we'll do that right away. So anyway, I'll take that motion to adjourn. Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, we're adjourned.